At this time, I'd like to call to order the February 15, 2012 Planning Commission meeting.
All members are present except for Robert Burgess, who's out of town on a family emergency. Number three, election of chairman and vice chairman for 2012.
I don't have the amended agenda, so go ahead.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of this state?
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform
All the duties incumbent upon me
All the duties incumbent upon me
As a planning commissioner for the Parish of Ascension
As a planning commissioner for the Parish of Ascension
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability
And understanding so help me God.
And understanding so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Fellow commissioners, the agenda item number three, the next agenda item is election of chairman and vice chairman for 2012. Because of the fact that Mr. Burgess is not here and has not been sworn in, he would not be eligible at this point to serve as chairman. It was my intention to nominate him to be chairman of this committee. Since he is not here, I would like to make a motion that we postpone the election of the chairman until our next meeting.
I so move.
I second the motion.
I second that motion to postpone to the next meeting.
Is there any objection?
I would like to nominate Donald Sanji as a vice chair of the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Okay, I am now vice chairman of this commission and will be running this meeting in the absence of a chair. The next agenda item is approval or denial of the February 15, 2012 proposed agenda. What are your wishes?
So moved.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the proposed agenda. Any objections? Hearing, Mr. Compton.
Thanks. Until we get used to y'all's voices, whoever's running the meeting, could you say who made the motion and who seconded for the minutes so that Stacy can have that recorded correctly?
Sure.
Thank you.
So hearing no objection, we will approve the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting. The next item, approval or denial of the minutes of the December 14, 2011 Planning Commission meeting.
I have a question for the staff. None of us here, to my knowledge, were present at that meeting. This is Gasper Trevesi, by the way. We were not present at that meeting. I'd like the staff to concur that they believe the written minutes to be accurate with what took place at that meeting.
Yes, the minutes are accurate.
Mr. Chairman, looking over the Planning Commission meetings, I did find on page two, under Staff Review Comments, Section 1, there's a typo. It reads servitude of passage is required to be 40. In the parentheses, we have 50. We need to correct that before we approve it. I'd like to make a motion that they correct that.
So we have a motion to approve, accept the minutes with that correction.
What is that correction, by the way?
But is it 40?
Is it 40 or 50?
It's 40 or 50.
It's inconsistent. Which one is?
I mean, it was supposed to be 40 feet.
40?
Yeah.
Correct. So we've got a motion to accept the minutes with that correction.
Second the motion. This is Gasper.
Yeah, made by Paul Nizo, seconded by Gasper Trevesi. Any discussion? Any objection? Okay, well, those minutes are approved. The next item is approval or denial of the minutes of the December 14 Planning, of Joint Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I will ask, Mr. Compton, is this the one that we're going to approve next meeting?
When we have the zoning commission?
My opinion is that typically these minutes would be approved by the Planning Commission meeting and then by the zoning commission meeting. So you can approve them for the Planning Commission, and then next month, when we actually have items on the zoning commission agenda, these minutes will be on there so the zoning commission can also approve these minutes. They need to be approved by both commissions.
Okay.
So you can approve them in two different meetings.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved. This is Gasper.
Gasper Trevesi moved. Maury Bishop seconded. Any questions or discussions? Any objections? Okay, so those minutes are approved. The next item, agenda, is public comment, period. And this, as it was explained to me, and I'm new to this, every agenda item related to action that we're going to take has a public hearing attached to it. So this public comment, period, is, I suppose, for something other than the other agenda items. As such, if there's anyone who would like to make a public comment at this time, we'd ask you to approach the secretary and give your name and so forth. Okay, hearing no takers, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is a public hearing to approve or deny the following family partitions. The Calvin King property lots X1 and X2, Earls and Associates, Council District 7. Would you identify yourself, please?
James Faugu, representing the Landry family and Earls and Associates in the following family partition, asking the commission for approval.
Staff have any comments on this? Okay. Any?
Typically, the first step is if the commission has any questions or comments of the applicant, our comments are 99% of the time going to be what's written in front of you, so we don't typically have anything to add unless we're presented with new information at the meeting. So at this point, it's your guys' opportunity to ask the applicant questions.
There's someone with their hand raised in the back of the hall. I'm not sure how we go about getting him.
Public comment. We're here for Jefferson Crossing and this kind of stuff. Do we talk after he does?
That is a different agenda item, I think, sir. That is this?
Calvin King Crossing?
Yes.
We would like to comment on that.
Okay.
Typically, after you're done asking whatever questions you need to of the applicant Then we'll open up to the public comments. Then you can open up to public comments, and that's when you have them approach.
Okay, are there any questions by the commissioners of the applicant?
No. It's all pretty clear cut.
Okay, and no additional comments by the staff. We've got your recommendations here. Okay? At this point, then, I would entertain public comments. If, sir, if you'd like to come up, identify yourself to the secretary, and we will allow three minutes for a comment.
My name is Gary Cross, and I live in Jefferson Crossing, which is adjacent to the property that he's mentioning, the Calvin King property. There are several problems that we want to address. First of all, there's a 12-foot utility servitude gravel road. We do not want a gravel road. We don't want the dust or the noise next to our property. We're in a very nice subdivision, and that would present problems for us. There's a utility pole on the Jefferson Crossing servitude that was temporary for the security light and the mobile home that they're going to be moving. All of Jefferson Crossing lots have underground utilities, and this is not, this should not be an exception. So we would like the telephone pole moved off of the Jefferson Crossing property. There appears to be a drainage ditch going into Jefferson Crossing servitude at lot number four, which is my lot. And also, they were going to put a sewer system in. And my question is, the drainage from the sewer system, is that going to drain into the servitude at Jefferson Crossing? If it is, we object to that. We have underground sewer systems. If the parents are deceased, would this property go for sale to the highest bidder or become a rental property and become commercial? We want to know that before they do this, before they build a house for the parents. Would they be allowed to build other units on the property besides the planned house? Garages, work sheds, stuff like this? Again, we would object to something like that. This property is a zone residential, and if so, would it change to a different zoning if they're allowed to put two homes on the property? Does this property meet the restrictions and the building requirements of Jefferson Crossing? That's another question we have. Would the approval of this petition change or affect the Jefferson Crossing restrictions that we now live with? So those are the problems that we feel need to be addressed if we approve this. And that property backs up on Jefferson Crossing, I would say probably anywhere from six to eight different properties. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
An additional comment? Come on up and sign in, please, and...
Jennifer Cross, I also live in Jefferson Crossing. I just wanted to also let you know that I tried to get in touch with everybody else that was, that received a letter, but we never got, were informed that this, that the meeting was changed. So some people did not know that. It was originally scheduled in December. January, excuse me. And we never, there was never another letter that went out to letting people, a certified letter, letting people know that it was, it was changed. So that's just, I would also like you to take that into consideration also.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Melinda Ventunen. I live in Jefferson Crossing, Lot 3. My, that property is behind my, my house. So right now, I'm a night shift worker, and with this noise and everything, it really bothers us. And that pole for the servitude, light pole, is really bothering us because when they had the construction and had that line done, they just left, these people just left hanging cables, and we have to do our own cleanup. And with the noisiness, I can't wait this, this will be done. And I just want to know the unknowns, you know, the zoning property. I need the unknowns to be answered.
Okay. Are there any other public comments? This time, I would ask the applicant to address the concerns brought up by the, by those in the public, that made the public comments.
Which one you want first? This isn't part of Jefferson Crossing subdivision. These, these two residents were here before Jefferson Crossing subdivision was even here. As far as drainage or septic tank, I mean, they are on a septic tank. The water drains to the front. Everything drains up to the front drainage servitude. As far as building restrictions, this is a half-acre lot, which is bigger than any lot in Jefferson Crossing as it sits. As far as rental property, I can't, I mean, who can predict what's going to happen after the, the parents die? I mean, it's something we can't predict. As far as rental property, I mean, there is rental houses in Jefferson Crossing as we speak. I can't predict what's going to happen when they die, what they're going to happen. I know they will be moving the mobile home out and putting a residence there, building a residence. As far as a light pole shining, I mean, I don't know what to say about that. I mean, if there's a light pole, I mean, it's not, that's something that needs to be addressed, I guess. It's, I don't know how to address that one. Light pole in the way? She says, did she say shine? Light pole was in your eyes, shining?
No, I think it's on your, it's my property, but it's in your house and serving the property.
Well, then that's something your homeowners association can contact the utility company and get it removed.
I've tried.
Okay.
They had it specially put there.
Well, then the utility company can move it back onto my client's property. They shouldn't, they shouldn't keep it on your property.
Not without them.
Well, if it's servicing, if it's serving my client's property, then, you know, it has...
All speakers have to go to a microphone.
Okay. As far as the gravel drove, road, I mean, that gravel road was, been there before, before subdivision was even developed. It was always an issue. Before they built their lots, the gravel drive was there. That house has to, well, the first residence has to be at least, I'd say at least 20 years old. And if you, if you rode back there, that mobile home's probably been at least that, too. So we're actually doing something better. They're building a nicer house back there, removing the mobile home, so the people that are butting up to it are going to have a better view of a nice house versus an older mobile home.
Okay. Any of the prior speakers, were there issues that you brought up that have not been addressed? And come to the microphone if you would, if you have something.
Well, first of all, it was my understanding that the original owners are the people that owned Jefferson Crossing.
It's two different developments.
Yep. It is now, but it wasn't then. Originally...
Well, it was all one beach long tract of land.
Yeah.
It's a big landowner. He subdivided the property out and sold it to the developer of that subdivision.
Yeah, I'm a 60-year resident in Ascension Parish. The people that, in that property owns all of Jefferson Crossing. So, you know, we still consider them part of Jefferson Crossing. But as far as the light pole, the light pole is, looks bad in our subdivision, always has because we don't have light poles. Not a light pole, a utility pole. Okay? We have light poles, we don't have utility poles. As far as you draining, there's a drainage ditch right now coming into the back of my property from your property.
From back? There's a drainage servitude ditch down here, back over there.
No, it looks, it looks like it's...
It goes out. Everything drains to the front of the property.
Well, I can show you where it's draining into the back of my property. So, you know, there are problems over there. We have a very nice subdivision. We, we have 63 lots there, and we have people that are not transit people. They stay there. I'm 65 years old. I've been there for 10 years and enjoy the subdivision, and I don't want to see any problems. And we think this would be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I also want to address that the original owners passed away. These changes are being made by people that just recently purchased this house and are remodeling it and have come in. So the previous owners always did speak with us regarding changes that were going to be made, when there were issues that they had. Thank you.
Thank you.
They say, "We're not adding another residence." I mean, there's two residents on the property. We're not changing the property. We're just allowing them to transfer the property into their parents' name. We're not changing the foundation, the structure, or anything like that of the layout of the land.
Okay.
There's two residents now, and we're going to keep the two residents.
Are there any other public comments? Okay, then we will close the public comment, period. We have staff recommendations in front of us. Would staff like to elaborate on those?
What's the variance that you're asking the commission to approve?
Typically, it's required that on a, on a family petition like this, that if, if it's going to access more than, if it's going to access a lot more, it'll need, the actual, the actual servitude that accesses that lot will need to be 40 feet wide. They're asking for a variance to bring that down to 20 feet. There is a provision in our ordinance that allows for one lot to access for a 20-foot wide servitude to access that lot, and, but you have to ask for a variance in order to get that. And so because they're accessing just one lot, they're asking for a variance to reduce the 40-foot servitude to a 20-foot servitude.
Thank you. The error of closure on the plot, that's not a material error?
It's been corrected.
It's been corrected?
It was just a, an error was in the wrong spot. I was making it close, not close.
Okay.
It's a surveying error. And then the third, the third issue is basically, it's the final step to the family petition. Before the final plaque can actually get signed, the commission tonight will approve the final plaque, but it's not official until the chairman signs the plaque. And once that, that cannot occur until the owners have transferred those properties over to the family members that they've said in the letter. And so, once that occurs, the final plaque can be, can be signed after you guys approve it tonight.
Okay. Commission members have any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that we approve, provided the recommendations and the concerns of the staff have all been met.
As Mr. Nizo makes that motion, do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Trevesi. Any other questions, comments, discussions? Is any objection to the motion? If not, the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a public hearing to recommend approval or denial to the Parish Council of the following servitude revocation. The Prairieville Commercial Park, Lot 2, to reduce the 25-foot rear servitude to a 15-foot servitude. Application made by Land Source Incorporated. Would you identify yourself, please?
Yes, sir. David Patterson. I'm owner of Land Source and was hired by the owner of the lot to pursue getting the servitude revoked. And actually, it's incorrectly stated on here because at the last meeting, I think the December meeting, we deferred, and my, my application was amended to, instead of revoking the full 15 feet, I'm now asking to revoke just 184 square feet, which is about the size of a master bedroom, around the corner of the building. Right now, it's a cloud on the title. There's a business there, Roofing Solutions, owned by Mr. De La Cruz. And one of the things that we were asked is why did he buy the building with the encroachment? He bought it, I guess, within the last two or three months, he purchased the building. Well, he owns the building next door, and in addition to being a, I wanted to point out that he's a resident of Ascension Parish, and he also is a business owner in Ascension Parish, and his business is thriving. The business name is Roofing Solutions. He wanted to expand the property immediately adjacent to when it came open. And so he purchased it, fully knowing that it had, the building was encroaching into the servitude. And now he just wants me to make an effort to eliminate that cloud in his title. And so I don't know if y'all have, I can pass around the revised drawing that shows what we're trying to do. That's all right.
The Parish of Ascension Public Works Department has objected to this.
I know that.
And are you aware of that?
Yeah. I talked to Bill Rue, and Bill said that just as a rule, he did not, would not approve of any revocation of servitudes in this circumstance because he just feels like that it creates a precedent that he doesn't want to set. And I attempted to contact him in the last few days to try to get him to at least take no position rather than object and let, let the commission make, take that, make that ruling. And I wasn't able to reach him, and...
Right now, he's, you know, they're on record as having objected to this. Would be helpful if you could reach him and get him to remove his objection, if he's aware of what you presented to us tonight.
He is. He's aware of the fact that we reduced it down to, and I, I asked him, when I did talk to him, if he would make, and he says there, first of all, he said there are plans to widen the ditch. And I tried to get any specifics at all about any plans, and I think that it's just a conceptual plan now, maybe. And, and then I asked him if, when they went to widen the ditch, would they make him cut off the corner of his building? And he said, "Well, certainly they won't make him do that." And so I think in essence, who, the owner of the building has some sort of rights. I mean, if they're not going to make him cut the building off and remove it out of the servitude, then he has some rights. And I'm just trying to clean up his title and get the, this, that small portion, 184 square feet of the servitude revoked. And the only other thing that Mr. Rue said was, "Well, if we go to widen the ditch and his building's in the way, you know, we could incur some additional costs." And it was all speculation. You know, there was nothing specific. And I think the, you know, I'd still like to ask the board if they would approve the revocation of that small portion of the, of the servitude.
I think we would be remiss in approving this without a further discussion with Mr. Primo. I personally would have a problem with that. I, I think there could be a solution to this, though, as you suggest.
I do, too. And what I, if I could have gotten ahold of Mr. Rue, what I, the other thing that I'd like to propose, in addition to reducing it down to the little small area that we've talked about, is maybe a hold harmless. It says if they do widen the ditch and there is additional cost incurred by the parish, you know, that, that he would, he would cover that cost. And I think if I, maybe if, if y'all will allow me to defer it to the next meeting, then I can address that issue with him.
I would move that we postpone for the subsequent meeting. In the meantime, what I would ask that...
Okay.
Oh, sure.
Okay. At this, at this time, then, we will, we will open a public hearing. Does anybody in the public have comments about this agenda item? Hearing none, I will then entertain your motion.
Again, the motion is to postpone us making a recommendation for approval. There are three objections to this. Department of Public Works, East Ascension Gravity Consolidated, and our own Engineering Department. I would like to know what are those items and why? And that gives you the opportunity to address them in your subsequent submittal.
I would appreciate that.
Is that your option, sir? We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, Mr. Bishop, seconds. Yeah. Is that your option? Is that what you want to do? Postpone?
Yes, I would like to do that, yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any other questions?
No.
Okay, well, we have a motion second on the floor. Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, that motion is approved. We will postpone that until our next meeting.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Next item is a public hearing to approve or deny the following overlay zone site plan review. Pre-development meeting for historical overlay site plan for Bocage Chapel and Reception Hall in and in Council District 3. And you are the applicant?
Yes.
Your name?
J.B. Easterly. I'm with Jerry Langwall. We're Langwall Engineering. We're doing the design work for the Bocage Chapel. Dr. Rundell, who I worked for, sends his apology. He found out about the meeting last night, and he's in charge of a five-year-old, so he couldn't leave Houston, and he is from Houston. He sends his apologies. If I can answer any questions, I may be able to answer them. I'm speaking in his stead only partially.
All right. Okay. Any questions of, of the applicant from commission members?
The proposed chapel is about, is 63 feet or so from an adjacent property line, line, according to the plaque.
Yes, sir. Correct. It's the back left corner if you're facing the property.
Uh huh. And have, have there been any objections or any concerns? And have, have there been any objections or any concerns from that property owner?
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir. Basically, what we are, I think that we're asking is the exceptions or the, the uses specifically allowed in, in, in historic district. A chapel was not specifically stated, even though there's reception hall, meeting hall, hotels, exhibition rooms. We, with further investigation and study, we've found various chapels that have been placed on historical plantation sites. The one that we're actually kind of doing a little bit of a facsimile of is, it's St. Mary's Church. It's on, it's located on Laurel Hill Plantation, which is about ten miles south of Natchez. It's not a, our building's a little larger, but it's, it's Gothic in style, the same style that what we're proposing to, to use or to do.
Okay.
So the chapel will be primarily used for weddings or...
Yes, sir, correct. Last year, we received an... Approval for a reception hall that we're, that's under working drawings right now. We haven't submitted to the Fire Marshal or IBC yet, but we're working on that now. And it just works in concert with the beautiful Bokage property, you know, where we can have... We also are putting some exterior restrooms that y'all should see, real close to the rear parking lot, where when we have outside weddings, in the meantime, they have appropriate places, facilities, as opposed to having to bombard the mansion, you know?
Ricky, this, this, this request conforms with the historical surrounding, or the historical overlay requirements?
Yes, sir. It's, it's our interpretation that a chapel is essentially a meeting hall. It's a place where people are going to gather in a space. Lance Brock and I sat down with Laverne, and we talked about, how will this building be reviewed when the plans are submitted? And it will be reviewed as a meeting hall or a conference center type space, and so that is an allowed use. There are some amendments that we're going to propose to the historic site overlay that clears up some of those confusing things, and we're simply going to add chapel just so that there is no future confusion, because we think it's a more than acceptable use for historic plantation. So that will be coming to you guys in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of commissioners? Okay. At this point, we'd like to open the, the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to speak to this issue, please come forward. Hearing none, we will close the, the public hearing, and I will ask the commissioners, what is your pleasure?
I would recommend approval of this request.
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the historical site overlay as recommended by staff. Any other questions, discussions? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, that motion is approved.
Thank you.
Seconded by Mr. Callender. Okay. That brings us to committee reports, which is on the agenda. We, at this point, do not have committees of this commission, so we will pass over that agenda item. Next is new business. Is there any new business to come before the commission? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Mr. Bishop?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Nezal. Any objection? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.